All right, I will call the meeting to order at 4:25. Thank you for putting up with my delay. I was caught in another meeting just a few minutes ago. So roll call of committee members. Susan DiVina Gini here.
Cameron Combs here.
Kelly Mackey here.
Brian, are you here?
I am here, Ryan Sanders here. So I can't tell how many people are in the room.
Thanks. All right. Indication. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. For 1.4, audience to address the committee. All right. Then with that, agenda modification. Approve minutes from October 11th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Cameron has moved to approve the minutes. We have a second. Motion in a second to approve the minutes. What are we, a roll call vote is what we need to do.
So I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Cameron comes by.
Kelly Mackey, aye.
Brian?
Ryan Sanders.
Thank you, and Susan DiVina Gini, aye. Okay. Do we need to approve the teleconference thing? Yes, that's our. Needs to be stated, we are still using teleconference due to state of emergency. All right. 2.1 Charter Impact Monthly Reports. Over to you, Jim.
I'll take over the screen. Right, so October is also the basis of the first interim report. I know we just finished this a few minutes ago. But you're checking in every month, and so first interim is the first check-in really for the authorizer in the state. And so this is pretty similar to what we talked about last month. I think that three main changes are after last month, we met and discussed correcting the assumptions. And so there was a shift from last year to this year where there's less dependency on outside consultants and more in-house staff. And so that's why there's that shift. It's partially offsetting. The state has authorized using a slightly higher LCFF rate, about half a point. So that's included in this model help. And then there's a, you know, a little bit of a lower assumption for ADA. We're looking at about. What's the? That says 249. I don't think that's right. I think it's 246. I typed up that. A little bit lower assumption than ADA, but fortunately, there's that half a percentage point increase authorized for this year's funding. So not a lot of change from September to October model, which in that sense, that's favorable. You know, we might want to do better overall, but we'd like to see at least consistency unless we authorize a change. Overall, it looks like it's close to 4 million. It's not quite 4 million in expenses. I'm just using that because it's easier to quantify that way. That's not a terrible number, but that's more of an enrollment 300 number. And I know that's kind of a goal for the school. But that's just sort of a, you know, just keeping that in mind. At that near 4 million level of expense, there's extra money this year. But ideally, that would be an enrollment 300 in order to balance out if that. This year includes the, you know, we're still waiting on the official announcement of the whole harmless funding. That will come probably until P1 winter. That's really the basis of the surplus. So the current year plus the one-time funds supporting it is about break even. And then the gain is that recognition of the whole harm from last year, 431,000. And cash, while I talk, you know, gloom of cash outlook. October 31st is unusually high because one of the repayments that was going to happen by 31st got delayed. Artificially high on the 31st, which is nice. And then there was a little bit of favorability in timing. And so it picked up at the 31st, but it's already on its way downward. 31st was a late collection. So September 30th, December 31st, those quarters are kind of peak moments. But there's a delay in the school receiving it. So October was a peak cash time for the school. And so now we're in the decline until we get to the end of January.
Jim, when you say 300 for the budget of about 4 million, is that ADA or is that enrollment?
Enrollment.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, much better, much better than ADA.
Yeah, I got a little nervous there, so, okay.
Yeah, and again, rounding them, you know, we're in that range. And that was, is kind of a, you know, an initial budget number is always like, what would it look like? So the model is, looks like ADA 246. Kind of what we're looking at right now. You can see we're around 11,000 per ADA. And so that's, and then we really have the support of the one time when I move to that slide. So I, you know, for all intents and purposes, really, that May budget or June budget is, you know, is, we know that's very outdated. So I don't worry too much about that. But it's updating on where do we look now? You know, if we're at 246, like I said, this year it will balance. But next year wouldn't carry a 4 million operating budget at that level because we won't have the carryover revenue we have this year. Really highlights that. We're about, you know, the whole harmless essentially is creating a surplus this year to recover the fact that it wasn't included in last year. Got deferred to this year, so it's kind of a surplus this year. You still have 500 plus in one-time funds to balance the operations this year.
Jim, I didn't mention it last time, but I am a little concerned about the 94% budgeted ADA because I feel like we fall more around 90 usually.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this model, I went at, I took the liberty of knocking 93. That is part of, right? I mean, just these last years, growth, if you do have growth, sometimes it costs, comes at a lower rate, you know, various factors. So I always like to, I always like to keep it in that range. And then if you can, you know, budget some cushion if it comes in lower. The first two learning periods were in the range of 92 and a half. So 93 is within striking distance. But yeah, you might want to say, you know what? I think if I was early, the first one's always low. You go through waves, right? Seasonal waves. So you could, you couldn't put more, you know, if you needed to, you could put more one-time funds again in this year, but that's just going to cost next year. So right now, it's just assuming what would it take to break even without hold harmless? Ultimately, it'll be the council's decision. But coming into this, presumption was that hold harmless was the last year and we balance this year. So it's been modeled in that way. There would still be 126 remaining. And then assuming that about, about 90 a year in the new funds, 95, 100 in new funds.
Thank you.
Expenses really, you know, very similar to what we've talked about. I am already including a halftime administrative role that's not in place. So the forward is a little higher, you know, than what you're realizing right now. But I wanted to have it in there to show, you know, it sounds like that's a necessity and show the impact if that came in a little higher. You can see there's a big reduction in sub-agreement. So in prior multiple years, there was, there was a movement from mostly staff to mostly consulting, now back towards mostly staff. And so the budget came in old outside party consulting. And so we've been able to reduce that cost. So we'd expect to see the increase in staffing costs. So that offsets that component, but there's still going to be more cost in staffing with, there's a lot of hourly support. Understandable, everyone's experiencing that. But we're going to see still some upward trend there. So I think all combined, you know, it's in the range of sub-agreements maybe covering half of the increase. There's still another, you know, 150 or so in this model. Call 75 of that, you know, my placeholder. So it's probably looking 75 higher than budget plus 75 for a placeholder I have in there. The non-staffing expenses are still assumed to operate at budget. There's no real significant variance there. Those variances are just kind of enrollment-based or other cost-based. You can see where they're moving around about, about $10,000, pretty insignificant in a $4 million budget. Are there any questions about expense trends? Again, pretty similar assumption to end at 431 plus at this level at 453. If that was accomplished, the school could end with a fund balance about $1 million, 27%. That'd be good, good heading into next year, kind of restore the two years in a row where we've had a significant adjustment, anticipated having deferred a year. So I think for a couple of years, we've been talking about the million dollar fund balance. And this would finally catch up the timing and at that level. And you could go into 23, 24 with that assumption we've been holding that that's where the school would be operating. Like I mentioned, the October, you know, had a bit of a spike, 130,000 wasn't, wasn't taken back. It was, was going to be taken back by the end of October. So that was transferred in November. Cash is a little more favorable than last time we looked at it, but it's all, you can, you can see at the budget level, right? It dips to negative. So fortunately, there's enough cash stability to not dip to negative at the end of month. But the real challenge is the 10th and the 20th. Kind of the approximate payroll date. A lot of, most of the cash inflow happens like the 25th. And so we're ending, they're all ending dates, they're graphed. We're ending stronger than we are mid-month. So there's more cash for this in November through February than the chart really shows. Cam produced two different options in potential factoring of receivables for January through January and February. One in the range of 150,000 and the other in the range of 260,000. Those aren't included here. Obviously, they would strengthen the cash balance, but, but more important than this, they would strengthen the mid-month. So it'd make the end of month look a lot stronger and look like, why did we do this? But it's that mid-month rest time that would stabilize that. Good news too, though. With the AR projection, what I like is I see June and I see the projected June up finally above the red dotted line. The red dotted line is kind of like the first stress line, 15%, 15%. You'd like to go higher, but, 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 you know, end at 15% would be nice, strengthening the opening next year. Are there any questions about the October update?
Okay. Okay, any questions for Jim as far as financial reports go? Can you roll it down? It's like, lost. Okay. So can I have a motion then to recommend to the charter council the acceptance of these reports?
I will move to recommend the November or October, if we have to remember, to the charter council for approval.
Okay, I have a motion to recommend the report, so I have a second.
I second that motion.
Okay, a motion in a second. Roll call vote, call vote.
Cameron comes aye.
Kelly Mackey, aye.
Ryan Sanders.
Susan DiVina Gini, aye. Okay. Our next issue, and Jim, I'll let you talk about this one, is in new business, which is, or business, which is the factoring term sheets.
Yeah, so. So that's actually the, that's the existing outstanding right now. Yeah. So for consideration, I'm nervous, as I disclosed. Obviously, it's the council's decision, obtaining cash costs cash. I'm nervous enough about mid-month balances to be, you know, requesting CAM quote options to obtain cash through the second quarter. And so especially because the money is going to CAM, it slows down the receipt a little longer too because then the county, county, the funds are in treasury, the county issues the check, processes the check, and then they're sending it to CAM and then wires the funds. But you're looking at collecting the funding towards the end of the month. And so you're really looking at both payrolls, assuming on meeting both payrolls without having received last month's funding award. And so there is some improved cash flow in the model. There's definitely, you know, there's definitely times where you can, you'll beat it. But I don't, you know, I'm not comfortable coming and saying, we're gonna, you know, just defer everything and balance and be okay. So the original option I suggested to CAM was EPA was quarterly, it was around $150,000. You know, what would that cost the school? So that would be obtaining cash after the council approves and then repaying approximately the end of January. So it'd be about a, about two months there at the 2.49% discount. They also said, hey, is 150 enough? What would it look, you know, we can quote you an additional amount. So then they also quoted, I believe it was 260 total. So it would be 150 through January and then an additional 110 into the next month. So if January were a stressor. So those are the two considerations. I don't have a magic answer, you know? It's, I guess, I guess I would, I would say, if you're aware of any large outflows, now would be the time to bring them up so that we make sure we're modeling a non-reoccurring outflow. So 150 at a cost, we'll call it 4,000. 260 at a cost about 8,000. Not cheap, but it would stretch first into January and then the second, if you did the second option into February, providing that, that inter-month security.
Any questions for Jim about this, recommendations?
So it's a cost of about 4,000 for the 150 and then you said about 8,000 for the 260.
Or the, yeah, for the full of balance.
Yeah, it's one month longer, so it's a slightly higher discount. About 1%, 1.3.
So will 150 get us through, Jim?
There's, there's a fair chance. Yeah, if there's no, if there's no, let me open up a model on the side here. If there's no large item, big ticket items, like I don't see any big items, but you know, I don't always know. I think the 150 would, but it's, and, you know, you could say 150 plus. I'm prepared to defer AP if I have to. I don't think you'll have to, but we don't know, right?
Right. So later on on the agenda, we have the salary increases for teachers. I'm figuring that will cost us about 40,000. Is that significant?
That, that would be stretched out over the rest of the year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Given that it's, given that it's stretched out, it would be okay.
We'll have a lump because we need to catch up because this is, it's, this is November and we've told teachers we'll go back to September 1st to give them from that date when we first. So there'll be a lump this month. That'd be like four months worth of salary or something like that. And then it'll be stretched out for the rest of the year.
So the difference between the 150, let's see, the 150 would, 150 would repay in January? So, so that the month end without increases. I honestly, I feel stressed in February. But I'm, I'm in the argument on the conservative side that even though I'm telling you to cut costs, is saying, I'm really scared of not having enough cash. You know, there's a counterargument saying, don't waste my $4,000. But I gotta, I gotta take the side of, I'm more scared of not having cash.
Okay. Thanks for your honesty, Jim. Any other questions or discussion?
Well, the way I think it's, I would do the 260. Better safe than sorry.
All right, go ahead, a motion.
For that exact amount?
Of which we're going, what we're going to recommend to the board. Are you talking, see? Are you motioning again?
Yeah, I'll move to factor the 260,000 at the $8,000 fee to recommend that to the board for approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to, to the full amount was, which is the 260, correct? For the, the receivable, the CAM funding. Any, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Kelly Mackey, aye.
Ryan Sanders.
Susan DiVina Gini, aye. The motion passes.
Can we pay some of this back early or anything like that? Or is it just a flat agreement?
Flat agreement, so your, your discount is collected upfront. And then this is to your benefit. But it's also technically, it's a, it's a purchase of a receivable, so they're not supposed to accept early payment.
Okay, so on to line of credit options. We were asked, staff was asked last year to begin to look at different options for credit based on both the cash flow and the Amazon account. That's their credit line has been, is being eliminated in January, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, January. So at this point, we have three options that we were looking at. One was CAM, who also has a line of credit for schools. One was the Cal card and one was a regular credit card. We've looked at the Cal card and don't feel like it's going to be the best option for us, but we don't have proposals yet for you on the other two line of credits. I do, I would like us to consider doing both. Both a line of credit from a bank or CAM and a credit card. The credit card allows for shorter-term purchases, whereas the line of credit would be things like the cash flow issues. So as we, hopefully next month, we'll be able to get better information for you on that for your decision. Any questions on the line of credit options? Count it to five, so I will continue. The certificated pay scales, 3.3.1. So we brought this before and to, and discussed it briefly in August, I believe it was. And this, of course, we had a minimum wage increase this year and our 10-month teacher salary scale starts at that minimum wage for white collar minimum wage. This is in line with what Chico Unified does. So we, of course, needed to increase the pay scale to accommodate that change, which is happening in January or must happen by January. So a couple of things covered and noticed some odd incorrect calculations that had ended up in the spreadsheet. So we wanted to clean that up. We also had not seen the Chico Unified salary schedule yet. And they passed theirs in the end of September. So we were able to compare to their salary schedule as well. So we're very close now to their salary schedule, giving a 3% per year increase throughout the pay scale. The columns, the four columns are the same as they were in the past with the same as far as there being the pay, the pay scales. The difference, if you look, do we have Chico Unifies?
I have it right here.
Alex, do you have Chico Unifies put up?
You want me to do that really fast?
Sure.
Yeah.
While you're emailing, may I ask a question about this?
Absolutely.
Is this, is this the base scale for people with credentials only? Or does this apply to all school employees? How do I interpret this document?
This is for the certificated, so yes.
So it's like essentially just, this is a teacher pay schedule.
Teacher pay scale, right.
Gotcha, thank you.
My own is not on here because that would be a management pay scale, which we haven't looked at yet. So this is just really for teachers.
Got it.
We had passed a classified pay scale increase in August. So we've already done that for this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so here briefly is the Chico Unified. So you can look at a compare and contrast. They include a second column at each level for with the masters. We just add, we just tack on, I think it's 1250, which you can see when we go back to our own scale. And we have four levels as opposed to their three. And we have four levels as opposed to their three. And that's because we have, that fourth one requires either a Waldorf certification for us. Either a Waldorf certification or a special ed credential. Which is a direction we went a couple of years ago, so. So that's a quick comparison and then let's go back to, if you don't have any questions on the Chico pay scale. Go back to ours. So my last thing in explaining it, can you run all the way down to the bottom to what we added at the bottom for stipends? Okay, so we have. Traditionally paid, since 2016, paid. Special stipends, you see the master stipend, if somebody takes on the faculty co-chair position, there's a stipend for that. The testing coordinator has a stipend. We do training over the summer. And so those are included and the home visit stipend is included. We passed this, we approved it a couple of years ago through. The charter council, but I've asked that it be added to the pay scale so that it's, it's. It's clear and it's reviewed along with the pay scales every year. So this has been, this hasn't been up to changed based on the past. It is, we're just including it on the pay scale now so that. It's easy to find and to be reviewed.
Start it's paper here. Masters.
The master stipend is paid, it, it's added to the, all of the, the masters faculty chair and co-chair. And testing coordinator are broken up into their contracts, so they're paid, a portion is paid every month. But it's an annual payment.
Thank you.
So a couple of things that I've seen. When we get down to year 22, the, the biggest salaries down there at like 22, 23 and 24. Were actually exceeding Chico Unified by a few thousand bucks. I would almost like to cap it out at, you know, 20 or 21 years. I don't know. Who on our payroll, et cetera, is at that. You know. So I don't want to devastate any employees. But I don't see why we should exceed. You know, them and that.
So you would say year 21 would be our last year of raises?
Well, 21 to 99,000, maybe at 23 to 24. Yeah, 21 were about 3,000 up from there. So yeah, I might just cap it there, but. I mean, I mean, Chico Unified goes up to 31 years and 31 years are paying you 115. So, let me, let me look at this a little closer. I'm trying to see if, Alex, can you scroll up to the. So I can see the top of the right column. Thank you very much. Yeah, we, that last Waldorf for sped certification. Is it starts getting a little higher than there's at year eight? Or year nine?
Can you put, um, may I ask that you put Chico Unified spec up again?
So year 10 is 74 there, what's year 10 on ours for that? What year 10 is 74,009, it's year 10 on ours. Is 74, so that's where we start to exceed them. Whereas the other columns. Don't exceed them.
Do you have an idea of how many employees, what we're talking about applies to?
I'm currently 17.
17 or in that sped column?
Oh, we got last column?
Yeah.
Let me, let me look, hold on. Of our, of course, our goal, Ryan, would to be have the majority of teachers in that column because it's a Waldorf. Certification. And to be a Waldorf certified school or a Waldorf. Full member, we need, I think, 60% minimum, so it is. So that's the other piece of it is we would want everybody in that column, as many as possible in that column. But let me look at the, the spreadsheet we did earlier and I can tell you pretty quickly.
Cool, thanks. And then on the schedule that we're looking at now, what's the, what's the heading on the last column? Just trying to figure out what the apples to apples comparison here is. This is a master's degree versus a lot of Waldorf, Waldorf training.
Yeah, and we actually have an additional stipend for a master's degree as well. So somebody at, with a masters would be 1,250 more than the C1 scale.
So. I mean, so we have a stipend for the masters potentially in the final column. And that makes us even higher. So right now we're equivocating, you know, Waldorf. Certificate with. The same amount of additional units, like about 30 extra additional units out of the. It caps on 75 units. Plus that. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I don't like the stipend for the master's degree to be then on top of that.
The reason why I ask how, how many employees this applies to is it feels like. The answer is not very many, especially considering you're talking about 10-year sped certified employees. So yeah, if 60% of your workforce were at a higher rate, maybe that would be concerning. But I, I imagine you're going to tell me very few are 10-year employees with this certification. So represents little financial risk and a great PR about how you pay better.
I don't know exactly, like Susan's looking it up, but I can think of. Potentially, you know.
You know? How many people have the masters? And no, how many people have the Waldorf certification? I'm just, five, okay.
And are any of them 10-year employees?
They're all 10-year.
Okay.
Yeah, so there'll be five.
Okay. So we're talking a difference of 10 to 15,000 dollars total across the whole workforce.
At this point, yes.
What about the master stipends for those employees? Because I know some of them have Waldorf masters degrees.
Yeah, a number of the employees have both a Waldorf certification and a master's degree. We have, I think, two or three of those. Total.
I, I guess my concern is we're not really. Having employees pursue the Waldorf credentials and master's degrees at this point, but if they will. If all of them suddenly were to get them, then we could possibly be in trouble.
It doesn't happen suddenly.
They'd have to suddenly get them and suddenly be 10-year employees, though, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but it is, it is the goal that we continue to increase the numbers. And we aren't, we haven't really been working on that. You know, supporting teachers to get the Waldorf certification for a number of years just because of. Some of the requirements that we're, we're researching at the pedagogical team right now. Around what that training needs to be and we need to get some clarification. On what would be an appropriate training for a. Public charter school. Teaching Waldorf and using the Waldorf methodology. So we're working on that with the alliance, but, so we haven't really focused on that. We have a good percentage of our staff already certified, so we don't need to either. But eventually we will be hoping to increase the numbers of teachers who are. In that, but that's at minimum two years out. So is that a decision we need to address tonight? Or is it something? We can, I would want to take some time to talk to faculty about that before. Teasing with that, with their, their sense.
Just one other thing to consider. We, I believe we intend for these Waldorf and sped certification generally to be in the classroom teacher realm. Now let's say we have one of these people move into the reading specialist position or something like, because we do change jobs. I do think we'd be overpaying the reading specialist. And not getting a lot of bang for the buck out of the Waldorf certification. If they're just doing reading intervention and things like that. But you know, the same in my case, if I had a Waldorf. Degree, I don't think you would be getting a lot out of that. In math, you know, so. That's my fear kind of is, I, I know one employee has shifted into the specialty realm. You know, and retain that Waldorf sped and I'm not going after them or anything, but you know. It, it just happened too much and I think we would be. Overpaying at those positions. Like a Spanish teacher or a music teacher or a reading specialist.
So I wouldn't disagree with you, Karen. But, you know, that's.
I, I mean, just from my, my knowledge of what goes on in Waldorf mathematics. I already have that expertise outside maybe some of the philosophy that they have. So, so I just don't see why it gives them a great advantage. You know, in instruction.
It gives the school overall an advantage. To have everybody have, have the same training as, and to support Waldorf. That's. And I'm going to do that some discussion we need to have tonight. I, I, maybe we do.
Looking down the road, you know.
Yeah.
But other than that, I will say, you know. One of our employees sent out the, the Chico Unified pay scale a while ago and I, you know, I looked at it and I'm just like, well, we're almost there. We're not far off at all. So, you know, I'm willing to accept the scale you're proposing, even though it doesn't get entirely the way there. But it's just so close to me that it doesn't matter. My, my only thoughts are maybe some teachers are expecting like a big pay raise out of this. And maybe they'll be a little disappointed that it's not as much as they thought, but I wasn't expecting anything huge myself, so I won't.
All right, any more discussion or questions? Do you have a second?
So once I can do it, what's the motion to?
You're moving to recommend the proposed certificated pay scale to the charter kids.
I make a motion to. Everything. Make a motion to. Accept the proposed certification A scale to the charter council.
Recommend it to.
Recommend it to the charter council.
Okay, do you have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion?
I'm just going to say that like. I'm not taking any blowback over like 100 bucks in step one, you know, or anything like that, you know. So I feel confident that we can defend this as being very fair, especially considering the potential of column four.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Karen, come back.
Kelly Mackey, I.
Ryan Sanders, I.
Susan DeVina-Guiney, I. All right, executive director's report, I just have two items. We are, we currently have an empty position in, for the chair for the board representation. That will go to the charter council to ask them to appoint a new. Finance chair next week, so that will be a discussion there. And hopefully we'll be able to get that done, so I'd have to re-run this, maybe next thing, next time. The next time, the next item is a little bit more as concerning to me also. We have been presented with the healthcare packet for. Our, starting in January for staff. For the presentation of our, our healthcare. Maggie, did you forward that to me? Okay, can you forward it to Alex, please? Yes. So I'll preface this a little bit. We were asked to do and did some research this year on healthcare package and compared, did some comparisons. We. Talked to Keenan, who is new in the charter world of providing healthcare. They declined to. To offer us a package because we have too few people involved in, in our. Involved using the healthcare packet. We also reached out to Safe Schools, who is not, who was talking about doing it, but they have not done it yet. And then we looked at the Beaufort County Office of Education or the. Package that they have, which was more expensive and. Basically equivalent in what it offered. So we went back to our broker and were given this package. They do comparisons and, you know, it's a pretty thick package of comparisons if you want to look at it. Between different, who, costs of different providers. A big issue over the past years has been to make sure that we cover the same providers in the area. So people don't lose access to their doctor when we change packets, packages. So that was one of the factors and then the cost of what we pay. So those are all things that Maggie and I looked into prior to bringing this to. The. This committee. Now, the issue that we have is we have this packet, but it was not put on the agenda. So what we want to be able to do, and so I'm sharing it now so that you can have it and look at it. And then we will need to have a special meeting to actually discuss it and approve it. So.
Is there anything here that's going to upset employees because I know they're very sensitive about it. Just saying.
Um, other than, and we'll put this out also to the employees as well. There is a, a 9% increase in cost. I think I shared that. Last month at charter council and at other meetings and at faculty meetings as well. So knowing that there's not a huge difference other than that in, in the overall package.
Employee.
Alright, so, um, I'm going to ask Alex to put out a, see if we can get a special meeting done so we can get this, might be Tuesday before the other meeting, um, so we can get this through the council for this, so we can go through the council, before the December staff meeting.
Before the next charter council meeting?
Yeah.
Which is next week?
Which is next week, so we need to have it like Monday or Tuesday.
Not a bad, you do for it, you can again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so that was what I wanted to share today as far as for the, uh, the Executive Director's Report. So we just begin to, um, to take a look at it, no action can be taken tonight. Alright, that's my report, any questions? Okay, my quiet counted five, I'll move on to item four, our next meeting, um, our next regular meeting will be December 13th, um, Tuesday. At that meeting, we will have a joint, um, Council and Finance Committee meeting in order to, um, go through the audit, which needs to be approved by, December 15th, so that will be that meeting, alright? And with that, we'll adjourn, thank you very much.